Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2024. Secretary Denis, will you please call the roll?
Secretary Denis, I'm here. Vice Chair Martini?
Here.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Mayor Disorga? Member Poirot?
Here.
Member Childs?
Here.
Member Sexton?
Here.
We are almost all present and have a quorum.
All right, the meeting is called to order at 6:02 PM, and this meeting is being recorded by GCTV. If any other persons present or also recording, you must notify the chairperson at this time. I don't see anybody. Great. Our first item is to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, "To Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparations for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel." The committee will return to open session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session for that purpose?
So moved.
Motion from Member Martini, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Member Sexton. Any discussion? All right, Secretary Denis, will you please call the vote?
Secretary Denis, yes. Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Member Poirot?
Yes.
Member Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, so we will go into executive session, and we will return to this meeting after a brief executive session. Vote to approve the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Member Martini, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Sexton. Discussion? All right. I'll just say, we're very pleased to be able to offer this contract, and let's vote to accept it. Is there, let's see. Why don't we do it by roll call? Secretary Denis?
Denis, I'm a yes. Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Childs?
Yes.
Poirot?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Right, passes unanimously.
And I'm a yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I'm typing and talking simultaneously.
And Assistant Superintendent Patton, I'd wanted to say a few words.
If I could ask Stephen Sullivan to join us at the public comment table, that would be great. Like to offer congratulations. Stephen Sullivan will be the next Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. We are very excited to have you in Greenfield. You come to us with many years of experience as an English teacher, a principal, a superintendent, and you have a wealth of knowledge in curriculum and instructional strategies and developments. So we're so excited to have you as part of our team, and we really look forward to having you in Greenfield and working together. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. It's been great to work with Karen and Christine to this point, and meet members of the interview and search committee. So looking forward to transitioning in in the next couple of months, and look forward to the work ahead and being part of, I think Karen called it, the Green Wave Nation.
Wonderful. Would you say a few words just to introduce yourselves to the community who might be watching from home, and just share a little bit about your story and how you came to us?
Sure. So my name's Stephen Sullivan. I've been in education now for about 20 years. I started as a teacher at Dean Technical High School in Hoi Oak. I was there for eight years. I did take a year leave of absence. I taught abroad in Madrid, Spain for a year. And when I returned from that, I started working on my administrative license. I earned that and was fortunate to get an assistant principal job at Hoi Oak High School. I was there for four years in that role, transitioned into the principal role. I was there for three years. And at that point, I left Hoi Oak, where, Hoi Oak is my alma mater as well. I graduated from Hoi Oak High School. Left Hoi Oak to go to Granby as the principal of the junior/senior high school. I was in that role for three, four years, sorry. And our superintendent left in March, well, I think it was April of 2020. There was a lot happening at that time. And I pursued the superintendency. I've been in that role for the past three years. And I see this as an opportunity to get into a bigger district with focus on teaching and learning, and look forward to the opportunity to continue to grow and learn about Greenfield and all the great work that's happening here. And like I said, I'm just looking forward to the transition over the next few months. Happy to answer questions if people have them.
Thank you so much. Do members have questions? Well, I'll just say, we're very, very happy that you're joining us, and very excited about the opportunity to start working for you. And we're all very, very dedicated to our student outcomes. And so I hope you know that we've got your back, and we're here for you for what, let us know what you need to do your job and make the, you know, and improve the student outcomes for Greenfield students. And we, everything we've heard has been so wonderful, so we really look forward to working with you.
I appreciate that and share the sentiment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night and look forward to working with all of you and continuing to get to know you.
Superintendent, did you want to, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay, all right.
You're good, Stephen, thank you.
Excellent. All right. We'll move on to our report from the student representatives to the committee.
All right, so as per usual, we'll start with Student Council. Last week, we had 13 student representatives attend the annual state leadership conference in Hyannis. In total, we raised $1,513 for the Special Olympics of Massachusetts for the Polar Plunge fundraiser. As a council, for our theme, we dressed up as Care Bears and jumped into the ocean alongside 900 other students from across the state. While attending the conference, students heard from two keynote speakers, attended four student-led workshops and a banquet dinner. Seven of our students led a workshop. Once again, we retain the status of gold Council of Excellence by submitting our Book of Excellence documenting the activities and events we have held throughout the past year. A special shout out to Quinn Mass, who served over the past year on the state student board. We also want to congratulate Carly Blanchard for receiving the Unsung Hero Award for GHS in all of Western Massachusetts.
Key Club just received a generous donation of clothing for the secret lair, keeping us busy organizing. Our food pantry is available to any student who would like to take non-perishables. In February, we made Valentines for the entire school to share, created and sent Valentines to St. Jude's Children Hospital patients, as well as helped to serve dinner at the Elks Club St. Jude's fundraiser. They helped the Greenfield Kiwanis serve a community meal on Tuesday, March 12.
Winter sports have wrapped up. Congratulations to Amber Bergeron for scoring 1,000 points. She'll be heading to Framingham State University next year. The girls' basketball team ended their season 10-11, and boys' basketball ended 15-7, league champions. Ice hockey ended 11-8-1, also league champions. Girls' track 6-7, and boys' track 8-7, league champions. So we want to show congratulations to all teams throughout the winter sports season. Spring sports start March 18th, so get out and watch a game. You can find the schedules on ArbiterLive.com.
Last Friday, March 8th, GHS held the Second Annual College and Career Fair. The event was attended by all grades 10, 11, and 12, and there were over 25 employees, employers, colleges, and trade schools on display. The event enables students to bring resumes and share their interests with potential employers and colleges. Thank you, Mr. Bostrom, for hosting it.
Right now, French and Spanish Club are hosting the 28th Annual Taste of World Cultures from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. The event is free and open to the public, and will feature music and dance performances and an international feast donated by local restaurants. French Club also looks forward to their trip that's coming up in France next month.
GHS's Drama Club play, Myth Adventures, will be performed on March 22nd at 7:00 PM, and March 23rd at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM in the auditorium. A five-act play that covers some of mythology's greatest stories. The Drama Club, after a four-year hiatus, is full of talented performers who are working hard to present wonderful performances. Please come to see this play.
The library hosted the annual Galileo Trial with the Advanced European History classes on February 29th. They had 38 family members service the jury, and the students did a wonderful job. Juror Krasowska, bestselling author and illustrator, will be visiting GHS on April 2nd. He will give a presentation to the entire school on his 2018 National Book Award finalist graphic memoir, Hey, Kiddo: How I Lost My Mother, Found My Father, and Dealt With Family Addiction. Some students will also be invited to a small reception after the assembly, where they will receive a copy of one of the author's books and have it signed. Krasowska will also speak at Greenfield Public Library in the evening, and we encourage families to attend if they are interested. The program is generously funded by the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library, the Opioid Task Force, Massachusetts Library Board of Library Commissioners, and the Institute of Museum and Library Services.
Library Club wrapped up the book-to-movie series for this year. In February, they showed It's Kind of a Funny Story, and on March 1st, they showed Are You There, God? It's Me, Margaret, both of which had a nice mix of GHS students and a community members in attendance. They also had a lot of fun on game day, and are looking forward to making gimp creations at an upcoming meeting.
And last but not least, our school's trivia club team attended a show or a competition called Ask Schools Match Wits, and our episode will be filmed, or was filmed in January, and will be airing March 16th at 7:00 PM on NEPM. It was an exciting game, and the second year of GHS's participation after not having a team for a number of years, so we hope everybody watches to support. That concludes the report, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions for our student representatives? Please, Stacy? Member Sexton?
Thanks. First, I just want to say that we are all so incredibly proud of you all, not just the two of you, but all of the students that you're representing through your report. I did want to, I was just wondering, what was the nature, what was the workshop? That's, you mentioned that seven students did a workshop. What was that about?
So I, one of them I can't speak to because I wasn't there, and I didn't get a chance to attend as a GHS student. The other one I did help run. And so as a whole, the state student council is called MAS-C, and we have a theme every year. This year was Mascar, so it was a little play on words. But this workshop that we ran was called Assembling Your Pit Crew. So it was about finding people at the conference who you could work well with, finding a good group of collaborative leaders. And it was really about solving mini-challenges, like we had them use like strings and rubber bands to make cup towers, and all sorts of like little bonding tasks to bring people together and develop communication strategies and develop their general leadership skills.
Awesome, thank you. Just one more thing, and this is like nothing too serious, but I don't understand what a gimp creation is, and I do want to caution you that in certain circles, that word "gimp" is actually a slur, an ableist one. So just be mindful in for moving forward with your language, and maybe pick a better word that tells us what exactly that actually is.
Could you highlight in what section that is, just so I?
Your library club, it's in the very last line.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. Yeah, I did not know that, and I didn't know that was included, so I will definitely keep that in mind in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Other questions or comments for our student reps? Yes, Mayor Disorga?
I probably should know this, but what is the Schools Match Wits? What, like, I just don't know anything about that.
Yeah, that's okay. So Ask Schools Match Wits is a trivia competition throughout largely Western Massachusetts. High schools that choose to participate have teams of four students that go and play against each other. It's hosted at Westfield State University, so you go with your group, you participate, and then the top, I believe it's eight scoring teams, move on to the next rounds in advance, and it's televised down NEPM.
So that's where we could find it if we want to?
Yeah. It's similar to like a Jeopardy! structure, and yeah, it's online. If you missed the airing, you can always find it there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I inadvertently skipped over the public comment section. Is there anyone here in person who has public comment? I don't see any, but there is someone online. Let me see. I see someone online. Are you interested in making public comment? If so, come off mute. Okay. I guess we have no public comment tonight. And now we'll move on to reports of the administration, and the superintendent has the business manager's report as well as her own. There you go.
I was just gonna steal Mrs. Pat notes. So, thank you. I have a brief budget update. At this point, we have had meetings with the Special Education Department to review tuition and contracted service expenses. And in the upcoming months, we will be doing budget transfers to address needs, and we will close out any purchase orders that no longer required. Some of the transfers, because I'm sure those are coming, that question's coming, some of the transfers are from potentially staff lines into contracted services for psychological evaluations. That's one of the primary things that would be relevant there. We, Karen and I and Andy have also been looking at the needs from the technology standpoint. We've met with John Grimaldi, the tech director, to review the technology purchases. That's primarily coming out of the last of the ESR grant. I believe I've mentioned that previously, so we'll be processing those in the upcoming weeks. The revolving accounts will have expenses charged at year end. And preschool tuition, we still have close to 50% of revenues to be collected, so we expect the deficit showing on that line to be addressed when we get those revenues. And then in grants, the special ed grant was approved, thankfully. So those funds will begin to be released and the offsets addressed. So we are at typical operations at this time of the year. We're beginning to look at the open purchase orders. We'll be following up with vendors whose invoices are slow to come. We'll be estimating expenses in some of our year-long purchase orders. Many times, we do what's called having an open PO, so things like our buildings and grounds, if we will have purchases throughout the year, for example, with one of our local hardware stores that our maintenance folks might need. We allocate a certain amount of money, and we have an open purchase order, and then any charges related to that are charged against that open PO. So we start to look at how much is remaining and the time left in the school year, and start to talk about releasing funds back into the available budget. So the committee who's been on may remember, at this point of the year, the budget, the accounts start to fluctuate quite a bit. It'll be negative and positive and negative. So that is all normal operations, so please expect that as we go into the next couple of months. And you want me to re-explain the open PO, or you're good?
No, but?
Okay. So when we have an expense that we know will be across the year, I'll use special education tuitions. That's the easiest example, I think. We don't just charge, we, the school department, works on encumbrances. So any expense, even if it's 50 cents, we require a requisition. And then, once the requisition is approved by all the layers of approval, we then generate a purchase order. That encumbers funds, so it takes it out of the available balance and sort of puts it in a to-be-used column. You'll see that on your budget reports. It's encumbrances, so you can see of those lines what we're expecting to utilize out of those funds. Tuitions, this is a great example. Let's say, for example, we know a student's tuition for the year will be $50,000. I'm making up numbers. We encumber the whole amount because we know we expect to spend that. Each month, when the bill comes in, we just reduce that. It's like taking it out of a savings account that we have put aside for that one expense. If at some point that student were to move, and we don't need that money held anymore, we would have to release it back to the available balance. So the same holds for any other expense that we know. We know across the course of the year, our maintenance folks will need a variety of small tools and nuts and bolts and other things that I don't know what to do with. So we do a purchase order for Home Depot or Abishan Hardware, or Lowe's, or whatever vendor we will use. Say for $100, they can go, give us the bill. We charge it against that money that we know was set aside for that expense. At this time of year, we start to look at, did we overestimate how much we might use? Did we underestimate how much we might use? And we look at how much of the year is left, and then we make adjustments to what's encumbered. And if we thought, if we put $100 aside for hardware, and we've only spent 20 to this point, I would say to Mr. Boudreaux, you're holding too much money available for nuts and bolts, et cetera, so let's reduce that PO, and that money goes back into the column that shows remaining balance or available funds. Is that any better?
Yes, but I'm gonna just belabor this for a minute because I'm getting to the end where I am, and I had another question. So we have a different procedure than you do, and I just didn't have the time to pick up to call you, to pick up the phone to call you. But so when our budget ends at the end of the year, we close it out with the state, and then anything that's left can't be moved to the next year.
We don't move things to the next year. We just put it back into the available budget, the local or the grant that it's coming from. So we don't move between years. We take money out of this budget. So if there were $500,000 budgeted for special ed tuitions, and we know the five places where students are going, we say, we know we're gonna spend $50,000 for this one, so we do a purchase order. $50,000 for this one, we do a purchase order, and so on and so on. So we know how much of the money budgeted we have sort of spoken for. If something changes and that money is no longer spoken for, it just goes back into the available budget for the current year.
Okay. I feel like I should take that offline with you, so everyone else?
Absolutely happy to give even specific examples that might help.
I don't want to take everybody else's?
I have a soup analogy, if it's helpful. But if you were like having some friends over for soup for the night, and that you knew someone was coming, you wanted to set that bowl of soup aside for them. So you, so not everyone can eat that soup that's set aside. That's like if you were to encumber it. But then if you found out your friend wasn't coming after all, you put the soup back in the pot, so you can share it with whoever, but it still has to be eaten by the end of the night, but someone else can have the soup.
That was a really good analogy. In my opinion, that was a really good analogy.
Well, I don't know. From the mayor's expression, I'm not so sure, but that was?
No, no. I feel like I should take that offline because I'd be taking everyone else's time for that. But it is a very different path that you have than what we do. And so I'm just wrapping my brain around that, and I will.
Not a problem. You let me know. But it is different than the city's process.
Okay, so thank you. I'll be giving you a jingle.
Okay. So, normal operations at this time of the year, and I just want to reiterate, you will see funds moving up and down in different budget lines. Don't be alarmed. It is normal, expected procedure at this stage.
Okay. Any other questions about the business manager update? All right. Karen, love to hear from you.
Thank you. First, our update on professional development. The administrative team spent most of yesterday with members from the DESI SSOS team, along with the Teaching Lab. And we were given professional development on our next instructional strategy, which is scaffolding and checking for understanding. The administrative team, principals in their buildings, will deliver the professional development in two sessions to their staff March 27th and April 10th. Next Friday, we do have a half-day, and for the high school, they have a half-day of professional development. They'll be engaging again with the Teaching Lab, and our math teachers will continue their ongoing professional development with illustrative math. Some curriculum updates. Just really want to thank the high school history department for really taking on and expanding students' opportunities to engage in civic experiences this year. Rebecca Zimmerman, our eighth-grade history teacher, has organized a field trip for eighth graders. They'll be going to Old Sturbridge Village on April 10th, and they're going to attend the recreation of an 1830s town meeting. And the kids will really get to engage in a town meeting from the past, so they're looking forward to that. Luke Martin, in the fall, organized a trip for US1 and APUSH students to Boston. They went to Lexington and Concord. They walked parts of the battle road. They took a tour of a battleground at North Bridge. They went to the Freedom Trail, Old North Church, Paul Revere House, Vaneal Hall, and the Old State House. And I always love to include pictures for you all to just see the joy and excitement that our kids get from leaving campus and really experiencing life outside of Greenfield. So I included a few photos from their excursion last fall. Curriculum mapping. ELA teachers at grades K and 4 are gonna begin reviewing the draft curriculum maps that we have completed thus far, and they're gonna tackle that. They started today at a faculty meeting, and are gonna be working on that through collaboration. I really want to thank the curriculum mapping folks, Marguerite Rancourt, Heather Bell, Missy Uwer, Brian Tucker. They've been really working hard on that. So they've done a lot of good work. And Matt Sepeck has been working hard on the music curriculum maps. We also started a science curriculum group, and we had our first meeting last week because we are going to begin the process of vetting high-quality instructional materials for grades 6 through 8, as well as biology and physics. So that was our opening session, and we have a professional development meeting with OpenSciEd, which are the free science resources from DESI in two weeks. So that's exciting. Per the policy, you need a yearly homeschool update, so I wanted to provide you with some homeschool information. We currently have 116 active homeschool files. We had 147 this time last year, so those have decreased. There are some that are inactive and incomplete, and Ms. Tower, my admin assistant, works weekly on just trying to connect with families to see if they actually still live in Greenfield or if their students have transferred. And we try to keep following up on that so that we know where these kids are. Four of those families re-enrolled in Greenfield Public Schools, one in grade 2, one in grade 6, and two in grade 8. And then you'll see five students actually aged out. And 19, we have confirmation that they relocated to either a surrounding school area or another state. And then, last but not least, my February break, our interventionists in Title I always try to provide activities that engage students in reading and math challenges. And they do lots of prizes and giveaways when they come back after the week of vacation when they've completed those challenges. And the Title I interventionists love to share their happy winners when they give away books and math games. So I included some photos from the middle school, So I included some photos from the middle school, Federal Street, and Newton for you to just see all of the happy children winning their prizes because they did a lot of hard work over February break. And that's it.
Thank you, superintendent, and then we can get questions for both of you.
Okay, just a few updates. I'm very pleased to share that Sarah Crawford has returned to Greenfield as an Assistant Director of Pupil Services. She was here with us prior, and has returned already a few hours a week as she transitions out of her current position in another district, and she'll join us full-time after the April break. I'm also pleased to welcome our new Assistant Superintendent, but Karen appropriately shared her remarks. And I want to share, just with the committee, that staff turnover is a very typical, expected part of operations in a school, compounded with the fact that there are staffing challenges in all types of industry and employment at this point. This time of year is not surprising to see turnover, and it will continue all the way through the start of the next school year. So I just want to encourage the committee to not get too discouraged or to read anything other than it is normal for people to leave one employer and to join another. And for staff who leaves us, you know, many positions we are filling with someone who we have gained from another district. So I just want to, I guess, remind everybody that it is normal operations for staff turnover. The other part of our normal operating procedure is that very shortly around the April break, we will be posting for all the positions that are open, such as, perfect example, our school psychologist positions have been open for several years. We will post those. We will post any position that has been filled by a substitute for the bulk of this year. And then, the other place that we do need to post as anticipated openings are any positions that are held by a staff person whose license is scheduled to expire prior to the start of next school year. Most of those positions will be maintained by the current employees in them. I don't want that to be alarming to people and think we're losing, you know, 30 people. But I do need to go through the same process we've gone through for the past couple of years, so please do not be alarmed should you see a number of postings. We will be fine with our staffing, as much as we're fine with our staffing at any other time. So, I'll provide updates to the committee as we go in the next few months with regard to the staffing piece. We do, however, continue to need instructional assistants across all levels. So if you know anybody who's interested in being an instructional assistant, as well as substitute teachers and substitute IAs, we would love for anyone interested to check out School Spring, check out the link on our website for employment, or contact my office, and we'd be very happy to talk with you about available spaces. So, the next thing, kindergarten registration is happening. We have done building-specific registration evenings at each of our three elementary schools. Our current registration numbers are higher than they were at this point last year, so we don't know if that's going to mean a higher-than-anticipated enrollment, or if we are just getting folks who want to enroll their students earlier. But if you know anyone who will be five by September 1st, please encourage them to call us early. There is a screening date in April, and we would love for all of our kindergarten students to be registered by then so they can get screened. I will not rehash the College and Career Fair, other than to thank Mr. Bostrom again, and also to mention that he shared that Tammy Silk, the Administrative Assistant in the Guidance Department, was very helpful in coordinating all of the college fair, so thank you to them both. The Greenfield Middle School students participated in a Penny Wars fundraiser in collaboration with the PTO. They raised $3,138.62, which I thought was rather impressive, and they donated it to Shriners Hospital, Franklin County Sheriff's Office, Regional Dog Shelter, and Community Action. And I had a typo, I put "communication." I'll fix that, repost my report. So we greatly appreciate the time and effort of everyone who contributed, including Anna Marhefka and Caitlin Wilkins of our middle school staff. The budget, at this point, I have submitted the one-line budget request from the school committee to the mayor's office in an official memo, and now we just wait for the next steps from the mayor's office and city council. Mobile dentist, that's been in the parent updates weekly for a while and going out from buildings, has unfortunately needed to be canceled because of staffing issues at the dental practice that deals with that. So if I get any updates, I will share them. The eclipse, you may or may not have heard, we're gonna have an eclipse. It's quite the topic. It's on April 8th, and unfortunately, despite our greatest hopes that we could change the time of the eclipse, it will be, our dismissal will be during the eclipse. So we have ordered eclipse glasses for all staff and students, and sharing that because, you may or may not know, it is definitely contraindicated to look directly at an eclipse without the appropriate glasses. So we will be sharing information. I will share it with families through my updates. It will be on the website. We will have it sent out from the school newsletters, and we will do some education with our students in the days just prior, and they will all be given eclipse glasses prior to departure on April 8th, so that they can wear them for dismissal, and hopefully wear them for dismissal. So we would certainly ask parents to encourage the kids to participate in that. That's it.
Thank you.
I finished up on the eclipse.
Questions for the superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent? Not seeing any. Oh, you do. Great.
I know what it was. I had a question for Assistant Superintendent on the homeschool updates. What is, I just don't know this. Do we, like, watch over how they are progressing, kids that are being schooled at home? And I probably should know that, but I don't.
They have to submit a year-end report at the end of the year, and then we review that before their next year's homeschool application is approved.
Thank you. I just didn't know how that worked.
Other questions? Remember Brady?
Regarding kindergarten registration, there will be some outreach to the homeless families at the, yeah.
I have a, we have been, as a matter of fact, I was in communication with them this morning. I participate in a weekly meeting with Service Net, other community providers, our legislators regarding any change, any programs or supports available, and that has been something we're coordinating with them, sending us their, gathering a list of students who will be kindergarten-appropriate, age-appropriate, and then we will send staff to the days in to facilitate what we hope will be an organized kindergarten registration. But yes, we've been.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your reports. Let's bring it back to my agenda here. All right, we are moving on to the consent agenda, I believe. Let's see. We'll make a motion for the full consent agenda. Any member can take out an item. One item I will take out is the approval of minutes for January 22nd, as though those were not included in your packet, so. But we'll start first with a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Member Martini, a second.
Second.
Second from Member Denis. Is there any item that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda, besides those minutes? Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of the January 22nd minutes? Say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to school committee reports. I do not have a report. Budget and finance, do you have a report?
No.
Okay. As Chair of the Policy and Program Subcommittee, I'll say that, so, oh, yes, did we? Oh. Those were all included in the consent agenda, I believe?
Oh.
Great. So, yes, so, just a little overview. Many members of this staff and the administration, and Member Brady worked hard on developing a wellness program. Program is separate from policy work. It's basically the way this, the superintendent and the administration decide to implement the policies of the committee and in alignment with laws and other best practices. So, you know, normally, when we have a policy, we have a first and second reading. This is not a policy. This is essentially a vote of, to endorse the program, as the superintendent has presented it to us. And so it's basically our way of saying, we really support the work that you're doing, and we see the thought and time that you and others put into creating this, and we've got your back. So, that's essentially what. So may I have a motion to endorse the wellness program as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. A motion by Member Childs, and a second by Member Martini. Superintendent, anything you want to say?
No, other than thank you, and I will attach a link in the upcoming parent update so that the community can read the wellness program as a whole, and then we'll, we will implement. But thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee about the wellness program? All right, let's have a vote. All in favor of endorsing the wellness program?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. You're welcome. There wasn't a meeting of the executive subcommittee, redistricting and reorganizing?
I'm glad we saved time on the others, because this one might take a few minutes. We do have an update. So, we did meet, the last time we met was February 21st. And just as a reminder for the community, there are sort of two main matters right now under the consideration of the, this subcommittee. One of them is to do with Green River School, which we have heard from some community members about, which is great. Continue to send us your thoughts. And then the second is really to implement or continue to carry out and work through the sort of follow-on decisions that need to get made as a result of the vote that occurred related to redistricting. So I'm gonna give updates on both of those items. First, on the Green River School, Dr. DeBarge is diligently working through all of the administrative hurdles that it takes to do anything with a school building, and so we're sort of actively working to even get ourselves to the point of a process where we can have a conversation about what we're gonna do. So we're getting ourselves set, but to the best of my knowledge, there's like one more thing, like you're, like, we're getting really close to being able to have a good community-oriented discussion about what to do with that building, and understanding what that means for the town. The second, related to carrying out the vote, we had a discussion related to whether or not, and this is, so, you might remember, under redistricting, there were also sort of two key issues that played there. One was related to school choice, which we handled, that decision is done. The other, which still sort of remains on our plate, is about redrawing the actual district boundaries and sort of shuffling students across the schools. And so, the sort of decision that we were coming to, and were asked to make a recommendation to the full committee, about, was allowing students to age out of the school that they are in, when the lines are redrawn. And I will just say this right now, it was a unanimous yes recommendation to the full committee for a motion to do this, to allow the age out, mostly because it mirrors the way that we, the way that we set up the policy for school choice, allowing students to currently age out of the school that they are in. There is another matter related to that, about transportation for those students, and we were actively awaiting information from our transportation people, which we have gotten, and we will discuss in a to-be-scheduled next subcommittee meeting, but that's sort of where we're at with that. I would say the main item for consideration tonight for the main body is that we have made a motion in the subcommittee to recommend to the full committee to allow students to age out of their school of origin after redrawing the lines, and that was unanimous. So now I think we need to have a vote here in the full committee, assume, you know, barring discussion about that.
Okay, thank you for that. I am coordinating something with our council about our executive session item that's happening later, and I need to get on the phone with him, so I think we need to call a brief recess before we can take that up. I don't know, do we need a motion to have a recess, or can we just call a five-minute recess?
Do you want to look it up online?
Yes, may I just, sorry?
I believe you can call it, and if no one objects, it's okay. That's what we do.
Okay. Okay, we are back from our recess, thank you very much. Member Sexton, sorry about that, if you wouldn't mind bringing us back to where we were.
Yes, no worries. Where we were was we, at the subcommittee level, had unanimously made a motion to recommend that the full committee make a motion to allow students to age out of their current school, regardless of the school that they would go to when the lines, when the district boundaries are redrawn.
Okay, thank you for that. And, let's see, Superintendent, did you, were you aware of that motion at all?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I looked surprised. Absolutely, we were, we were in agreement with, I was in agreement that that is, in fact, what came out of the redistricting meeting, yes.
Great, okay.
I'm sorry if I looked surprised.
No, no, that's okay. Just checking. So, why don't we have a motion, and then we can discuss? So, can you state the motion for us?
Yes. I would motion that we allow students to age out of the school that they are currently in, regardless of the school that they would be assigned after the redrawing of that school boundaries within the district.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, so the motion is from Member Sexton, the second is from Member Childs, and Susan, were you able to get that?
Almost.
Can you read me what you've got?
To allow students to age out of their school that they are currently in, regardless of the school they would go to...
When school boundary lines are redrawn, maybe we should be specific with this, in fall 2024?
Five.
Twenty-five, right.
Yes, and actually, would it be okay if we said the school they are in at the time?
At the time.
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Change of the vote if you can.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's...
...of their school that they...
That they are in, at, no, at the, at, yes, that they will be in at the time that district boundaries are redrawn.
In fall 2024.
Five. I think we did it.
And thank you for bearing with us, Susan, I really appreciate it. All right, so you have the motion and the second. I guess, Superintendent, can you talk about what the implications of that motion would be for us?
The, the students who are in the schools, where they, they're already in the schools, so they're remaining in those schools, we don't anticipate would have any impact on class sizes, because that's who's being factored into, that's who's in the schools currently. The piece that would be, that would need to be addressed by families is no different for students in that situation than are in the intra-district situation, where incoming students would be enrolled in the student, applicable to their boundary location. So, for example, if a third-grade student is in Federal Street, and when the lines are redrawn, their address would then go to Newton, I don't know, this is just an example, they could choose, their family could choose for that third grader to stay and age out of Federal Street, but if there is a younger sibling, that younger sibling would need to enroll in Newton. So, families could have students in two different schools, but that is no different than the situation with students who are at schools through intra-district choice. Their siblings, who may be looking to enroll in kindergarten currently, are not allowed, are not able to enroll in a school other than the one that they would enroll into because of their address. So, we already have families who may be split, so this is a consistent consequence of that decision. It would address the concerns that families certainly could have about changes needing to take effect. It could impact students who have only been in a building for one year and then having to change so quickly, or students who've been in a school for multiple, four or five years, and then having to change with just that one year left. So this does, in fact, give families some choice. Certainly, if a family has older siblings in one school and the younger sibling is needing to enroll in a different school, the older student could certainly be brought over to the school where their younger sibling is now enrolling. So, that, there is flexibility, but that, I think that was just a decision that the school committee needs to make in terms of, do you sort of have the same structures in place for intra-district and for those who would be moving because of geographic changes in the district? The piece that we need to still follow up on is the busing. The one piece that the bus company did say is that, and I'm going to look at Karen, I could do this.
Yes.
Yes, I know, I'm checking. I'm checking. Working, we have to double-check before we say things. Because Mescus did indicate that we could continue to bus students even if they have, even if they are remaining in their school that, of origin, I will say, rather than electing to move into the school that is their new school by redrawn lines. So, that was an option discussed at the subcommittee, because they were, those students get bust, and we, the district, would be making a choice that required a change, so therefore, this discussion was, would that be something the committee would want to do in continuing to offer transportation until they aged out? Unless they were within walking range, and then certainly they would continue to be within walking, you know, if they were still, if they were a walker, they may still be a walker, depending on the address. It wasn't very articulate, but I can answer questions.
Questions for the Superintendent about implications? Yes, Mayor Disorga?
I just have a comment. I, I think that sounds, I think this sounds very wise, because you're actually giving some leeway to families, you know, and then they'd have the opportunity, if they had a little one coming up, whoops, and it was redrawn, that the parent could make a choice one way or another, and we're still accomplishing what, it sounds like we're still accomplishing what the community wanted, and the, it's all going to happen in, we're redrawing them for fiscal year, for the school year, that, next school year?
No, the year after.
But, what were we telling, when are we telling people, when do we, when will people know that there's going to be a line change? You know, like, how far ahead of time would people know, because they...
What, specifically the line changes? You mean, what, at some point, I would think fairly early in the next academic year, so they would have pretty close to a year to be aware of that. There are proposed changes already that were done as part of the redistricting process, and those are on the website. They have been, they're in the same section toward the bottom of the website with all of the other redistricting information. I can't guarantee that's exactly what will end up happening, but that was a draft of what streets might change schools at some point in the process.
Well, I think it was a thoughtful approach. That's, that was my comment. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Member Childs?
Just a quick comment supporting the motion. I think it is so important that we have a set of rules that applies equally to everyone, and so we need to make sure that even the kids who are not intra-district choicing but are being moved have that same option to stay where they are. The committee voted last fall/winter that it was important not to disrupt kids without the family's input, to allow them to finish where they had started, and with that vote, you really, to be consistent, have to give that same option to the other kids who are being moved without their families say so.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Member Denise?
Just want to echo what Member Childs said, considering that we made the vote choice that we did in the wintertime, and the fact that we are trying to pursue equity across the district, this is a really reasonable choice.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, and all abstain, so it passes with five votes. Thank you very much for your, for your work. Handbook Committee?
Yes, hold on a second. I'm just writing down what we just did. The handbook subcommittee will be meeting on March 25th at 6:00 PM, and I believe it will be at the middle school library, but that's not definite yet, but when that happens, the public will know, and they can come and make public comment, but it will be in person.
Great, thank you very much. Let's see, do we have anything? Amy, can you give us a report from the collaborative?
Sure, there's a summary report from FY, or, I guess, calendar year 23, it's included in tonight's materials of all the collaborative initiatives, it gives a good overview of what they're doing, and I think our next meeting is in, at the end of the month, in a couple weeks. That's it.
Thank you. Anne, your city planning?
So, we did not have a regular meeting with discussion deliberation. What we had was a tour of the new fire station before everything is moved in. It was a lot of fun, and our elementary kids are going to love field trips there. It's nice, we're definitely getting something special. The next meeting, I believe will be at the regular second Tuesday of the month, 4 o'clock on Zoom, and they'll be posted on the city webpage.
Thank you. Secretary Denise, our legislative representative?
Okay, so we have two things upcoming. We have the day on the Hill, which is happening in Boston, Beacon Hill, at the State House on May 6th. I originally said May 4th, because they hadn't actually set the date yet, and that was what it was last year, but a few weeks ago, they officially set the date, and it is May 6th. So, I'm still not sure if we'll be going with any of our local committees together, but that's something that's in the works. And on March 27th, at 6:30 PM in the library, we will be having the Legislative Day Preparation Event, which is being hosted by us, and I originally thought that I would need to work very hard to invite all of the local school committees, but they are really on top of it, and MASC has created an invitation, RSVP link, and have sent it out to everybody in our Division 5 group, which sort of leads into the Division 5 thing next. The Chair of the Division 5 is Humira Fasahudin, and she sent a transcript of the March 1st Joint Committee on Ways and Means Hearing on FY25 Local Education Aid. If anybody would like to listen to that transcript, I'm not sure if that got emailed to everyone, but I can forward it to you, it's just a chance to listen to it and get an idea of what bills are coming up, what kind of aid we can start asking for, and to prepare for some of the resolutions that we will bring here after the day on the Hill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and is the District Wellness Committee continuing to meet, or are you...
Yep, we meet quarterly, we just met on Monday. It is, it's a group that's comprised of folks from, there's a FERCOG representative, there's a school committee representative, there's, I think, two or three parent representatives, couple of teachers, the athletic director, and we do have someone from DUCI that joins us at most meetings, and at this point, we are looking at, you know, the top-level pieces of the program. Athletic Director Kucheski brought up, Mike Kucheski brought up, wanting to look initiatives we could do within the middle and high schools around vaping, and so we did some discussion around that, and that's kind of how it works, is, is we look at what is in the program and how we can generate priorities around the work that then gets taken back to the nurse leader, which is Melissa Bednarsky, and hopefully, operationally, things will begin to happen that are from that plan. And like I said, we meet quarterly, so the next meeting is in three months.
Thank you. All right, so our next item will be to go into another executive session. Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent are going to say farewell now, thank you so much for everything. I just want to say, we'll do the motion now, but we do need town council with us tonight, and they will be here around 7:40, 7:45, so we will have an extended recess after the vote to go into executive session. Yes, Member Sexton?
Can I do something totally unrelated for two seconds, real quick?
Unrelated, if it's not on the agenda, I don't think so.
Okay, never mind.
But we can have an offline discussion. So, let's see, so I'll, I'll read the executive session motion. Vote to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline, or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The individual to be discussed in such executive session has been notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session, provided, however, that notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties. I don't have that, so we will be in executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, approval of executive session minutes from January 10th, 2024, meeting, the committee will not return to open session. May I have a motion to enter into that executive session?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Denise, will you call the roll call?
Yep, hold on, I'm sorry, was that Member Childs?
Yes, yep.
Sorry. Okay, Denise, I'm a yes, Vice Chair Martini is no longer present, Chair Johnson Musad?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Member Prati?
Yes.
Member Sexton?
Yes.
And Member Childs?
Yes.
The motion carries. Do we adjourn that open session? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So that passes unanimously, so the open session is resumed, and we'll do our executive session at 7:40 or 7:45 or so.